All right, it is now six o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. Councilman Woods will not be joining us tonight due to the passing of Ms. Lulamay Woods, aged 107 years. And we send our condolences to the Woods family. I'm going to ask Dr. Johnson if you'd give us the invitation.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this awesome opportunity that we have to assemble together as brothers and sisters in Christ. We thank you for this day for life, health, and for strength. We ask a special prayer for the Woods family, Lord God. Touch them in a time of bereavement and all those who may be suffering from the loss of a loved one at this time. Lord God, bind us together, Lord God, in one mind, that we continue to work together for the betterment of Marlboro County. Continue to place your Holy Spirit in each and every one of us, that you can guide us to the decisions that would improve your life, the lives of your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Moving along to the approval of the amended agenda item.
So moved.
All right, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All right, public hearing. Ordinance 818A, an ordinance to amend Ordinance 818 to outline conditions for renewable energy systems and to establish the effective date of this ordinance.
So from last council meeting, we did do our first reading for that ordinance, 818A. And that ordinance has to do with, you know, our ordinance that for solar farms. And currently, our ordinance has stipulation that we stop it at 75 megawatts, but we were going to eliminate that portion of it because around the state, they have used our ordinance except for that part. And there really is no necessity for that to be 75 megawatts. The ordinance is a strong ordinance, as it was stated by Representative Lisa, that it's a very strong ordinance that we have without that 75 megawatts. And it is going to stop some of our future economic growth if we keep that in there. And that's why we asked for that. And so this is the second reading, and just wanted to make sure we give the public a chance to sign up and have a public hearing on that.
Are there any questions? I don't see none. We'll move ahead.
No one sign up for the presentation?
Presentations.
All right. So I would ask the council to accept the second reading.
We'll vote on that at the old business. Okay. Presentation, Donnie Brock with Trinity Behavioral Care, proposal for SCORF grant application.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm sure everyone's aware Trinity Behavioral Care is the Marlboro County Alcohol and Drug Commission. With your business is Trinity Behavioral Care, and we've been with your county since 2005, I believe. Before I get any further, and sorry about the talk of program, I want to introduce Diane Hall. I've had the pleasure to lead our organization for about 13 years, and Diane will take over in about 60 days when I retire. So I wouldn't think it's appropriate for me to meet that. Diane's been with the organization for 33 years. She's been a leader across the state in design treatment programs. You're going to be very proud of her. Now to the plan. The sheriff and the warden and a couple of us have been working on something that we would like to do with the opioid settlement money. Sometimes that's called SPO, South Carolina. I forgot. Sorry. Opioid Recovery Fund. There you go. This county is in line. The number changes, but right now it's in line to get a little over a quarter million dollars over the first three years. It's an 18-year grant that each county already has money dedicated to. All you have to do is apply for it and meet the guidelines for it, which we meet every day. They're basically multiple SAMs up, and that's what we do for a living. So the nice part about what we're talking about is, under the current funding system in the state and Medicaid, when folks are in the detention center, as you probably know, we can't use Medicaid, we can't use block grant dollars, all the stuff we do for engine folks, folks without insurance, or poor folks on Medicaid, doesn't apply to folks inside the detention center. And that's a major problem statewide, probably nationally for that matter. What we're proposing to do, if you will allow us, is with the county, apply for these funds and use it to build a substantial program within the jail. We would have a full-time case manager counselor and a full-time care support person that's dedicated to working inside the jail and doing warm handoffs to get them to outpatient treatment when they leave. I know Dr. Johnson is very familiar that that's where you lose them, is when they come out. And we, programs I've been involved with in prior jobs, that association to get them to hook up with outpatient care goes from literally zero to 50 or 60 percent, which is not much worse than this jail blow off the street, if you want to true. So that's what we're proposing to do. Also, the second component to this is to have a care preventionist, one in uniforms, one of ours, who work as a team, who go out, take a little bit of dare. The content will be different, but we would have a partnership with law enforcement and Trinity going out to the community to do education around opioid addiction and recovery, to get out Narcan. Each of you have a box there, the state requires me to give you an education on that. So what you do, there's two next to spray. If someone drops on the floor and you don't know what's happening, call nine one one. Hit them with both nostrils before, if they don't come around in five minutes, do it with the other. And the question's always, what if it's non-opiate overdose? It won't hurt you. Won't help you, but it won't hurt you. So there's your training to go to that. Please keep it with you, or if you're, are your business first aid kid, or your church first aid kid. We've had folks in our logins that we brought back with us. So it is, it can save lives. That's part of what this parent would do. We're a community distributor for Narcan. They'll go out, they'll preach the word of opioid recovery and Narcan. Also, they can work in the schools. And one of my passions is that the team will also educate how to deal with folks that need recovery and get them into recovery, educate our law enforcement personnel. They will educate us. Together, we may go out to places like churches, or maybe DSS, or probation and parole, go outside the criminal justice system as well, doing that message. And as much as the working detention center is probably going to save more lives, that component there, I'm sorry, that component there really excites me. Any questions or comments? There's even a little budget on that, on the last page, I'm sorry, in front of you. One of the Narcan is a description of the program. I apologize, I was here to point that out at the beginning.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad to see this because I read it back earlier, but I also see that you are going to be in the schools of Marlboro County. Have you identified the schools?
Not yet, but as many as will let us. We did, the sheriff would like to focus on younger, which makes sense because frankly, the prevention efforts that are out there now that we do, the bulk of, is high school kids. But there can be a lot of pain for the vet working with elementary or at least middle school. So that's our preliminary thought. At least, we don't want to duplicate what's out there. So.
And this is, I mean, with the position, there will be ongoing money to cover it year after year after year?
The way that works is, the county has to apply annually for this grant. But the amount of money is already predetermined. So if your grants applications meet the requirement, you're going to get the money. If you don't do it, some other county will get it in about five years. They'll let it sit there for a little while, but they've said in five years, it's going to be accounted. By the way, more than half the counties have yet to apply. So we're not behind, but it's time to get going, in my opinion.
So this is the initial stage we need to start on, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am. As I said, the county actually has to apply to the funds. Technically, they could sign it over to another organization like us to do, but honestly, I don't know that. If I'm county council, I don't want to turn this over that much control when I have it too. But annually, we reapply. You can adjust it, you know, things will change. You can adjust what you're spending it on as you go. You're guaranteed, oh lord, it went up to, I think, nearly $300,000 now, but that amount is guaranteed for three years. It just actually goes up every time they win a lawsuit. That's why it fluctuates.
So it's a quarter million this year? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
You said a quarter million this year?
I actually think it's gone up to 300 something. If you'll allow me to modify my sheet, I'll tell you exactly how much it is.
Yeah, I was thinking, I thought you said it was 250.
There you go.
And what's that made for salary?
You have an outlined salary thing you can use for this.
Yes, but the actual awards right now is 307,702.67 cents. But it's gone up 50 grand in the last three months, and they're still winning lawsuits, so I was.
It'll continue to go up.
I think it will.
I don't think the county would be hurting if they applied for this grant. I think, you know, especially with the opioid epidemic continuing to ravage counties, I think this money would continue to go up, and there'd probably be more funding and more grant opportunities to be able to battle with opioid. A lot of money goes back because, as Mr. Brock said, a lot of counties don't apply for this type of funding. And so I think this is a very good, especially, you know, having that liaison with law enforcement. You know, we have a drug court here in the county, we have other, you know, when those inmates leave the county, sometimes they go right back because there's no transition. So if you're working with them, while they're in, you know, the institution setting, it's a lot, good likelihood that they will continue that treatment once they get out. So I think this would be something that the county would definitely benefit from, and the city would benefit from as well.
That's what basically self-sustaining.
Well, and also, I think you'll find that it will really help the recidivism back into the detention center. The programs I've been involved in the past, it's been shocking how much difference it makes. In Charleston, when they put a, we put a program in there, they went from a 97% recidivism rate to 18% of the ones that we had in our program. I can't guarantee that, but that always freaked me out, the sheriff can't interpret the data, as he would say. He don't know if they're going to some other detention center, but they're not kids.
And I think you'll see a decrease in, because a lot of the time, you know, those people who get arrested, yeah, they do a criminal offense, but the drugs are really what's pushing the criminality. So if we can tackle that on the front end, it'll reduce some of the burden on the sheriff department for having to, you know, arrest people for, you know, these type of offenses. So I think all around, this is a great opportunity for the county.
And again, on the outreach, I assume we're all aware of it, in case we're not, one of the hotspots for drug overdose, opioid overdoses is McCall. And I say hotspots, I mean, the hottest spots in the state per canvas. At one point, it was the hottest. I don't know if I can still say the, but it is still up.
But if we go back to February and March, if you remember, we did some out weeks and some things back in February and March, and we did it with Trinity, with Elizabeth, in February and March, and McCall. This gives us an opportunity. We have some people that actually go to jail every week for the same thing, for drugs. Week after week after week, they get out, they go right back. At least this week gives us an opportunity to at least have some conversation with them, try some preventative measures with them. That would help them, because our numbers aren't going to change if we don't do anything but take them in, go out like that. We're not doing anything.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, as you said, take them in and out, you know, if they go to jail, usually EMS is getting them, so that's, should we take, if it's a 10% decrease, this is a 10%, you know, not 90, or if it's just 10%, you should get 10% less on the sheriff's department, 10% less on EMS, you know, 10% less on everything, so it'd be, you know.
If we just, even, talking about the inmates that's going in and out, we look at what we could do for our middle school kids who are getting introduced to drugs and different things, the gummies, all the different things that are out there now that they can be introduced to that will help them as they're coming through, because at that middle school age, that fifth, sixth, or almost fourth grade, kids are already exposed at fifth grade. At fourth grade, they're already exposed to drugs. And so it gives us an opportunity by having this program to go to address that issue now, please, here. I mean, we're in the school now every day, so why not add another component to us being in there?
And you probably can tell another thing about this partnership is, we already have a partnership. We've been working collaboratively with the sheriff's office for a long time, and Sheriff McCall and Trinity go back to him first. So, well, he's always been very supportive of us, and I hope of the department. And so, again, if you're looking for how much will this cost the county, the number is zero.
We see a budget here that you have, and then there's a difference of a little over $14,000. Is that our portion?
You can pay it if you'd like, but I plan on picking it up.
Okay, we'll let you pick.
Okay. That was a just in case. If someone asks me, what if there's an overrun? Well, we'll be okay.
We appreciate that.
Well, this is our mission.
Mr. Brock, thank you for that presentation.
We continue to look at other grant opportunities. Marlboro County will meet the criteria for probably every grant on the face of the earth. And I think if we're proactive, we can really offset some of the costs with some free money that's probably going to be continually occurring based on some of the dynamics of our county. So like I said, I think this is a great opportunity to almost win that fight with opioid addiction and add some other components of psychoeducation that will target our middle schools, who are definitely being introduced at an earlier, earlier age, you know, to the dangers of drugs. And it's so easy and convenient for them now, you know, to be introduced. So, you know, we're hoping that we get this money and the other money that are allocated for these programs. And also looking into that opioid lawsuit as well, that the county, I think we need to check back into when we're going to, you know, apply for that funding as well, that we settled on last year as well, because that money can definitely go towards these efforts as well.
And lastly, next time you head towards Shaw, on the left-hand side outbound, past Waldmore, you'll see walls, you'll see a roof on that building before Christmas, and that's where we'll be this time next year, Patricia Moore Hennington Recovery Center. And we're very proud of that, and it's very needed in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Thank you. Nice to meet you, Ms. Diane. Moving to the approval of October 10th, 2023 minutes. So moved, Mr. Chair. All right, all in favor? Amendments have been approved unanimously. Old business, ordinance 818A, a ordinance to amend Ordinance 818 to outline conditions for renewable energy systems and to establish the effective date of this ordinance. This is the second reading, and this is the same thing. Our administrator was just.
Right. So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, we need to go into an executive session for discussion of personnel and contractual matters.
So moved.
All right, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Motion carries.
All right, we are back out of executive session. A motion was made by Councilman Strowman and seconded by Blackman to come out of the executive session and no action was taken. We're moving on to new business. We have a proclamation, a proclamation recognizing and proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month. Mr. Minister?
I move that we accept proclamation, proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month.
All right, all in favor? Motion carries, it's unanimous. Resolution 112302, a resolution authorizing the lease of a portion of the Delta Plant Site.
So, as we know, we don't have to do three reading. All we need is a resolution and the resolution has, what page is it on? The resolution that you have, we're just asking that you go ahead and set the resolution so that we can go ahead and rent, lease out that site for transportation.
Is there a second? Or is there a motion?
No move.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries, it's unanimous. 7C, request for grant funding with Marbury County SCORF dollars for a joint Marbury County Sheriff's Office and Trinity Behavioral Care project. This was discussed earlier with Mr. Brock.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the request for the grant funding with said provisions discussed earlier.
Okay. Did you get that? All right, all in favor? That is unanimous, motion carries. 7D, request to renew lease agreement with Aberdeen and Rockfish Railroad.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a lease agreement with Aberdeen and Rockfish and we would like to accept that with one modification in section nine under terms, we would like to limit the last sentence that the railroad have an option to renew a second to your period with just written notice. We want to just remove that clause and we ask you to accept it with that modification.
No move. Second. All right, all in favor? Motion carries, unanimous. Did you get the... We have appointments to boards and commissions.
I do want to make a plea to councilmen to fill the boards with people who are going to be actively participating in those boards and commissions and make sure that they are available, make sure that they are able to be contacted. We do have some important work that needs to go some of these boards and commissions and we want to make sure that that work is not being held up unnecessarily. And while we're, while you're making that, think about your recommendations if you have any. We are going to be meeting with the Economic Development Board every first Wednesday, okay? That will be every first Wednesday and we'll be getting a report from them monthly.
Any questions?
Questions, sir?
Yes.
Now, that's the board members that we appoint, right?
Right.
Now, what about that, the accelerator board wherein it's another little type board that they appoint?
Okay, so...
What, tell me about that because...
Right, so with, under the economic development board partnership, there are by ordinance established whatever board needs to be established and one of those is the image and workforce development. And so that board is based on the ordinance, is appointed by members of council and members of the original board. And so what we want to do and what we talked about before in executive committee, go through and make sure that we are adhering to that ordinance with the type... go through and make sure that we are adhering to that ordinance with the type of members that we have and rotating them out.
Right.
With the original board and with the subsidiary boards. So we want to make sure we're doing that, but that, that's going to take some time to really contact everyone and make sure we got most people under where we need them.
I just don't want to see people sitting on there from that.
No, we're not, that's, that's going to be no more.
Thank you.
That board's going to be meeting every month and we'll be getting a report every month. And that board will be led by, you know, our non-development director.
And it's diverse.
Yes.
And it's diverse.
So we'll, and, and the board, these boards that we do appoint, we got to make sure we're appointing based on the ordinance, the kind of people that we need in there to hold certain positions. And we do want to make it diverse, you know, when we can do that as much as we can, so.
Okay.
But we do, but by, by ordinance, we have to make sure that the people hold those positions. And certain companies may hold positions within that board and it would be incumbent upon them to make sure they're actually sending people who are diverse to us and those different organizations.
Well, Mr. Chairman, is it possible again to get the vacancies on each board so we'll know exactly what?
Do you have that list, Susan?
I'm not listening.
We, we have that list, we'll email it back out to you.
I might have my old list, I'm sure.
But we do ask that, you know, everyone go ahead and fill those boards because we do have some work that needs to be done in the very near future on some of those boards.
And some of those local boards have been meeting, like the library board and all those people.
Right, library board meets.
And, and we don't know the meeting dates or anything. That's what I'm saying, it would be good to know.
Now, that library board is established through state, through state ordinance.
We, we appoint those people.
Right, and they're established through the state and I'm really not sure about the chairman of that board and, and, you know, how that's going to work with us, but I'll make contact and make sure that they can come and give us a report, you know, whenever. And any other boards you could take out, just contact me, gather your concerns and we'll make sure those boards are operating the way it's supposed to.
All right, any other questions? Ms. Susan?
Mr. Parker, the board director of the library, Ms. Rogers, she has contacted us shortly prior to, and she would like to come in January, I think they usually come like once a year, she said she'd like to come in January to have the presentation.
That'd be good, so I'll get back in contact with her and make sure that happens.
All right, very good.
January either.
All right, we'll move to the acceptance of bids. We have a bid for Marlboro County Golf and Recreation Complex, the banquet hall, heat and air conditioning unit.
So with that, we, we did open the bids as promised yesterday in a public session and we had four bids and I'm, we had a recommendation to accept a bid from Hammer Corporation out of Memphis, South Carolina, fifty-five dollars, twenty-four-five dollars for that project.
Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir.
That fifty-five thousand, twenty-four-five dollars, is that inclusive of everything that?
So we, we looked over, we looked over the, what they sent us and, you know, it was, it was something that I hadn't seen in a long time, we have bids with that high of discrepancy, but they were apples to apples. Everyone had the same qualifications of what they were being asked and they all sent back the same thing that they were offering and just had such a wide range. And some of that has to do with some of the different companies and who they distribute through, like train, this one's a train unit for Hammer, am I correct? Hammer's train. And so we did have some requirements, we wanted the higher end, you know, companies, those who represent the higher end companies to bid on that and, and that's what we got. But then we got these numbers and the quality of what they were, said they were going to give us is the same on all four of these, it's just having to be different numbers for whatever reasons.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to inform the board that for the first time, the bid process did go through the full finance committee and we did, and we were charged with making sure that it was apples for apples.
And we did, your concern was still some of our concern.
Right, so that was very, very good for the first.
It wasn't just the lowest bid, it was the lowest bid, qualified bid.
Yes.
It was a qualified bid, so, so I made a recommendation to accept that bid.
And these contractors had to meet certain qualifications or requirements.
Yes, had to meet certain requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the bid from Hammer.
Second. Second. All right, all in favor? All right, motion carries, it's unanimous. I can, moving to the finance report, Mr. Park.
Mr. Chairman, council members, Mr. Clyburn, we have before you the report for October and general fund revenues for the four months ending October 31st, 2023, total two million six hundred fourteen thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars in comparison to one million eight hundred fifty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars for the four months ending October 31st, 2022. Timing of revenues collection for state shared revenues had, had a significant impact on year-to-date general fund revenues. Last year, for example, payment for rural county stabilization funds were distributed in November versus this year when those funds were received in September. Expect that number to be much closer in comparison next month. General fund expenditures through October 31st, total four million eight hundred twenty thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars of fourteen million two hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred and eighteen dollar budget or thirty-three point eight seven percent of budget year-to-date. That allows for nine million four hundred eleven thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars in remaining expenditures for the budget year. Some of the differences too with our expenditures has to do with timing. I've just mentioned, for example, we front pay our property and casualty insurance and for example, that all comes out of non-departmental, if you look at that, that particular department, we've already expended two-thirds of the budget. Well, of course, that's because we front pay that insurance. The same applies to workman's comp, we've already paid half of that premium, so that's part of the reason why expenditures, when we look at the percentage, is just slightly above a third of the, of the expenditures for the year. General fund expenditures totaled four million five hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred forty dollars for the same four-month period ending this October 31st, 2022. In conclusion, revenues and expenditures are up in comparison to prior year. I don't see anything that's out of, out of line or sequence in terms of the, of the report. I don't know, is there any questions, I'd be glad to.
You said revenues are up, is there any particular reasoning that they're up right now versus last?
They are, it's, it's really a timing issue because the state is sending out the payments earlier for whatever reason, they've kind of gotten ahead of the prior year.
Mr. Park, can you, and you too, Administrator, why do we also have in our package all of this about the ARP money funds?
Okay.
Why do we have this in our?
What we've got is I'm including in your packet each, each month expenditure reports for our project-related funds.
Okay.
And so the American Rescue Plan funds, of course, that was fund fifty-five, that's included in your packet. And what, what I've done here too, because this is a cumulative report, so it, it covers more than one fiscal year. If we were to just provide you the printouts off of the system, it would only do one fiscal year at a time, it would make it a lot more confusing, but what we've, we've done here is we've provided you project expenditures from, to date. And that covers the general obligation bond, American Rescue Plan seventy is a recreational project, and then of course, the, the golf course as well.
And we've talked, we, we thought that sometimes a report might be confusing if we had some of those funds from, from previous years that are cumulative, if you have them in there, it just, it just doesn't sit well with what you're trying to balance in your mind. You just need to know that that fund has a certain amount of money in it from last year, maybe year before, and that's the, that's the balance of that fund.
Does it have anything to do with our? Running total.
Right, it's a running total.
This is our running total.
It is. Right.
That's great.
Very good.
Very good.
Did you have anything to do with the numbering of the pages on, for us in our booklet?
Uh.
Ms. Rivers, thank you so much.
Ms. Rivers.
She did, she did that.
Did number those and, and the only way to do that is to handwrite that and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Because of the fact that some of the pages are portrait, others are landscaped and so, yeah.
Our booklet is very nice, but the layout is much better.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was, I thought we had a very good finance committee meetings.
Yeah, we did have committee meetings and they, they went pretty well.
All right, administrators report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On August 14th, 1916, the world was blessed with an angel. She was born Lulame Billings and after being married at the age of nineteen, Mrs. Lulame Woods had ten children, forty grandchildren, including our very own Councilman Anthony Woods, and a multitude of great and great-great-grandchildren who all lovely referred to her as Queen. She spent her whole life working as a caretaker, looking after and blessing the lives of others. And after a life of service, a hundred and seven years later, she was called home on November 9th, 2023. Now, I could go on and on about her accomplishments. A hundred and seven years, words just won't do her justice, so I would like to acknowledge the life of Mrs. Lulame Billings Woods with a moment of silence. I want to move our attention to my report. I first want to talk about Parks and Recreation. Registration for winter basketball is going on right now. You can register online, I want everyone to see this, register online, marlboro county sc dot myrec dot com. And you go there and there's registration form online. You can also call the office at eight four three four seven nine five six three two. You can register and pay online. You can also come into the office located at the public library and you can register there with paper registration. So we have several ways of registering for that league and we want to try to be accommodating to everyone across the county who has to register different types of ways. It's twenty-five dollars from four to six and then thirty-five dollars for age seven to seventeen. Any questions about that? Just want to make sure we're clear about that registration. Public Works, in conjunction with Waste Connections, Marlboro County will be giving out turkeys to Marlboro County residents with ID. This Saturday, November 18th, at eight o'clock AM at Marlboro County High School. All right? I want to talk about Operation Green Light. We had Operation Green Light through last week and, and I want to say, I want to thank Councilman Lawson for bringing that whole operation to our attention the way she did and she went and, and, and Ms. Sumter and they really went and bought lights and they put lights up and distributed them to everyone and to DT as well to get the lights up. And it was a success, we had a lot of great pictures from that, we had out in front of the courthouse, in front of this building, in front of this building as well as the administration building. And it was a great success and we appreciate that. The next day, Clean and Green Community Clean Up Week was a success, but I will let Councilwoman Lawson elaborate on that, she did pretty much all the work on that. I did go there one day with her though and she almost got hit by a truck, but.
No, we didn't.
But, but I enjoyed it so much and, and we did, I think we did, I don't know, what's the name of the street behind McDonald's?
Andros.
Right, Andros, we did that street and, and it was a lot of trash out there, I'll tell you that now, it was a lot. And some of the other streets that you did, I know they were, you know, you came with over a hundred bags altogether, but I'll let you tell that. The next thing, I want to introduce our economic development director, Mr. Tony McNeil, welcoming to the county. He will be giving the county a monthly report in future meetings, he'll be giving a report on everything that, that we can talk about. He's been working pretty hard already and, and he's been making sure, he's been getting to some of the existing industries already, even some industries that have closed down and we're going to get some of those opened back up. And so he's doing a great job and helping find the money as well, so I just want to welcome him here and, and let you know that he will be making a report every month. Any questions about anything?
Any questions? Sounds good. All right, the recognition of council members, I was talking with Ms. Lawson.
Thank you. First, I want to again thank everyone who supported the Clean and Green Week, I had some, some, I think I have two people in my district who participated in that, but I also had, I can also say thanks to EMS, Ms. Sumter, Mr. Clyburn, we all took streets and we took turns. And I do know that Councilman Johnson, he had his own area that he took care of, but we thank you for that, but thank you so very much. I know it was just a small amount of area that we was able to get, last time we had tons and tons of trash and we still have it, it's just that we didn't have enough people to participate, but I do have some people who continue would, would like to take November to just pick up trash. As a matter of fact, there's nine bags on 1541 bypass that need to be picked up. But thank you so much. And also Operation Green Light, gentlemen, I hope you enjoyed the green light, but we wanted to show you that we do appreciate them and thank you so very much. And I know I'm always bringing something to your attention, but I, I like this. And it's second thing, the third thing I want to thank you again, Ms. Rivers, for numbering the pages in our booklet. And Sheriff McNeil, thank you for your role in this lid control operation. I thank you for what we're going to be putting in place with that, we're going to be hearing something hopefully soon now that you share that with us when it's time, but we do appreciate everything. And to everyone here tonight, thank you so very much for your participation in being part of Marlboro County Council and pray that our meetings will continue to get better and better and that you get something out of them. Thank you.
Mr. Strowman?
First of all, I'd like to give a heartfelt condolences to the Woods family. They lost their, their queen, their pillar, their family. My heartfelt condolences go out to them. And I'd like for everybody to keep our sheriff and the police department, and the sheriff department in their prayers. Once again, we've had a fatality today and things that you all deal with that we, we can't even fathom, you know? You all go out and you do the things, do the job that we, most of us would be afraid to do, so. Keep you in your prayers. I'd like to say that we had a meeting and hopefully the Aquatic Center is online, I hope, we just decided what company that we were going to use to do the, the, the contractual work with them, so hopefully in the near future we'll have a big announcement about that, you know? Thanks for the citizens, everybody that came out, appreciate you. Please keep coming out, make us do our job, you know what I mean? And once again, welcome aboard to Mr. McNeil. We need you, we need you running, not jogging, not walking, we need you running, we need your help, looking forward to working with you.
Mr. Austin?
I want to say, you know, I, I just found out tonight about Mr. Woods' grandmother and I sent my condolences to that family. I wish I'd known earlier, but I just found out tonight. I wish I'd known earlier, but I just found out tonight. So I'd like to, we'll be in prayer for him. You know, Delta Project, we always talk about it, talk about it, talk about it. Very excited to finally see something moving forward there. So it's been a long time going. And so I'd like to, we're just excited about that. And so read an update for the OI Road Bridge Project. It's an SADOT update that was, I put out just a couple of weeks ago. It says, "Proposed OI Road Bridge Replacement Over Wolf Creek in Marlboro County. Project timelines have been extended due to issues in security additional right-of-way. The new bridge and supporting structure will be wider and will be redesigned, requiring right-of-way from property owners impacted. This is not the same as property owners abandoned the dam that was secured in early part of 2023. The right-of-way issue crept over into the summer and has now been resolved. As of October 31st, 2023, the right-of-way has been resolved. Project is scheduled to be led, that's receiving bids, in December of 2023. Contract award and project start March of 2024, and project can be completed within one year." It's a long time coming, but you know, just hard work, getting everybody together. You know, it's just, you know, everybody said, I guess we were up there while we were at the meeting, the guy told us, he said, "It, it won't be fixed." This is to prove that, yeah, it didn't happen overnight. But it was a lot of behind-the-scenes talks and getting everybody together and boots on the ground. And like I said, I'm looking forward to be able to drive across that bridge. And I know the Sheriff's Department, EMS, you know, it just, it delays time going somewhere. Whenever that address is right on the other side and you got to spend four miles to go out of your way. So hopefully within a year, you know, it'll be a, a big impact for, for our county, taking a lot of traffic off roads. It's not safe to have that much traffic on them. So I did want to read that, you know, but it's, it's been resolved. And we're looking forward to that good news here in the near future.
Again, my prayers and condolences to the Woods family. May God strengthen them in this time of bereavement. To Mr. Steen's point about OI Road, we've gotten inundated with calls and questions about that process. And we know it was a long and tedious process for those who are impacted by that road. But hopefully the project can move as scheduled in the announcement. And we can alleviate some of the pressures off those citizens who have to drive out of their way. And of course, you know, EMS and our Sheriff's Department, you know, we have to travel those roads that we can, you know, get that, that bridge rectified and those people can have easy access to their properties. Want to bring attention to our last week's election. A little disappointed, not necessarily almost in the voter turnout, but just the way that election was carried out. If, if you're a council member, if you're a citizen, regardless, we want to make sure that our elections are, are done in a competent, fair, and equitable manner. And from the, the information that I've gotten, from the people that I've talked to, there was a lot of problems in, in last week's election that we need to make sure that in the upcoming year that we really and truly address those issues and those gaps. So we won't have this problem in the election coming up. You know, a lot of people were disappointed that they were not allowed to vote when they rightfully should have been allowed to vote. A lot of people got turned away. A lot of people vote were not counted because there was some provision about it. They were not legally engaged properly. And, and you know, when you erode the confidence of voters, it really impacts our elected officials being able to compel people to utilize their God-given constitutional right, you know, to vote. So we need to make sure as, as elected officials to engage our local election commission to ensure that they understand what their roles are, what their jobs are, what their responsibilities are. And this is not to berate anybody, because I can understand that that's a tough position, especially in this political climate. It's not easy to carry on an election. But if we're going to have people in place, we need to make sure that those people are of the highest competency to ensure that people are not walking away saying that they're not ever going to vote again. Because you got a lot of people now that, that are saying that their vote, you know, they got out of their way. They came here to go one place, two places, three places, four places to try to get their vote. And then at the end of the day, their vote don't, don't count. That really erodes the trust of the voting population that impacts how we're able to govern ourselves as elected officials. And, 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 you know, we need to make sure, you know, that, that we engage our election commissions to the point where they understand that we're, we're not, you know, looking, but we're looking to ensure that fair and competent elections are handled throughout the county. So we won't have what could have been a powder keg on, on, on last week. There was a lot of people that really wanted to take it, you know, to some place. Because, and I can understand their frustration levels, knowing that they were legally required to vote, legally able to vote. And their vote, you know, did not count. And their vote for the person that they wanted to vote for was not counted. So we need to make sure, you know, again, that, that we are available to those election commission folks, that we are available to the voters and that we continue to, you know, engage voters to ensure that their vote does matter, their vote does count. And we want them to continue with this electoral process so we can elect the best qualified, you know, people to the position that's going to help our, our county. Again, thank you to Mr. McNeil for the work that he's already done thus far. A lot of people may not know behind-the-scenes stuff, but there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to improve the lives of the citizens of Marlboro County. We've been working. We've been working. We've been working together. We've been working collaboratively to ensure that projects are on the way, you know, whether it's recreational projects, whether it's economic development projects, what our administrator is doing behind the scene. There's a lot of work that's going on behind the scene with all of our councilmembers. So we appreciate the work that's being done right now. I know the citizen had this thing that councilmembers don't get along and councilmembers, you know, are doing. I think we are actively engaged together to improve the lives of the citizens of Marlboro County. Because that's what it's all about. You all employ us to make your lives better. And, and I can guarantee you that we're going to continue to do our very, very best to bring resources, money, and whatever else we can to Marlboro County. So you, as the average citizen, won't have a complaint about spending tax money, you know, for the very bare minimum that, that you're getting. We're going to continue to look under every surface, under every rock for the monies that we can have in Marlboro County that can improve the lives and infrastructure and everything we can. So that moving into the, the, the years to come, that Marlboro County will be in a better position than we've been in, in the past. So thank you to our councilmembers. Thank you to our administrator, Economic Development Director, and the whole entire county staff.
My condolences go out to the Woods family. Anthony and I went on council at the same time. So we've both been on here a pretty good while together. And he was often talking about his grandmother. And so I know that he is going to miss her dearly. So my prayers go out to him. And everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. You know, that's one of the busiest times of travels, Thanksgiving. A lot of people think it's Christmas, but it's actually Thanksgiving. So kind of plan, plan it out and get on the road and stuff, you know, and all. But just thank everybody for what you do. And I'd like to say that I agree with Mr. Johnson there, that we have done a lot in the last few months here. And everybody here is working good together. We got a good team going. And I think we're going to see some good things in the future.
Again, my condolences to Anthony and his whole family and his grandmother. Her and seven years, that's just an amazing achievement. And you know, without a doubt, she was blessed to live that long because of the, her conduct here on this earth. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up here next weekend. It's always a rough time for the Sheriff's Department. People like to think that the only Thanksgiving they care about is what they can take away from somebody else's house. And y'all keep your eyes open for people that might be going out of town. If you see something out of order, feel free to call 911 and alert the Sheriff's Department, whether it's in the county or any local city. McCall Christmas Parade is coming up December 6th, a few weeks off at 4:00 PM. Always a big time, big time in the town of McCall. To echo what Dr. Johnson said, you know, we did have three elections last week. And I think two of them went off pretty good, but there was an issue in, in one of the, the district, the district races. And it had to do a lot with the redistricting, the way the lines were drawn and the maps were not clear. And some people thought they were in one district and they were in another district. And it did get handed down that they got cleared out. But, you know, you don't, you won't, don't want to see anybody leave the polls unhappy, you know. And, and that is the goal that we should do. As we move into 2024, it's going to be a huge year as far as elections. The first election coming up is February 3rd in Marlboro County. That will be the Democratic National Presidential Primary. And then on February 24th, that'll be the Republican National Primary. And then you'll have your June, June primary election coming up and then a presidential election next November. So it's going to be a big, a lot of council seats, council seats coming up, a lot of offices in the county. And so we need to make sure, as Dr. Johnson said, make sure we get everything right, you know. I do know there's going to be a big push to do a lot of educational forums where people can understand what's coming up. And let's try and work these problems out before the, before the election.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. On Saturday, at the Clya Community Center, Mr. Ethan McCray and the Clya community will be having their annual Thanksgiving dinner. If anybody is, is hungry on Saturday, the food is free, the food is good. Come on out and, and celebrate Thanksgiving a little early with those in the Clya community.
All right, very good.
And Mr. Chairman, may I announce about the vaccination event tomorrow?
Yes, please.
We were in Clya area today, but tomorrow we'll be in the Veniceville area, Veniceville Community Center. Last time we had eighty-five participants, looking for at least a hundred and fifty. There will be coupons given away for anyone who like the COVID vaccination or the flu, high dose or regular dose, from ten to two at the community center. If you'd like to go on to CVS or Walmart to get vaccinated and bring that receipt back, you're welcome to do so. But you'll be welcome to come. We want you healthy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to send my condolences to the Woods family and recognize the celebrated life of Mr. Lulame Woods. What a blessing, a hundred and seven years. And I'd also like to welcome Mr. Tony McNeil to the team and look forward to working with you. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Stand.
All in favor? Motion carries. We're standing adjourned.